So I will appoint Jackie to serve for Donahue. We've got minutes of the previous meeting, but before that, we're going to amend the agenda to consider the two public hearing applications that are first in our agenda immediately after we close those public hearings. So can I have a motion to amend the agenda? Does that hurt us? Some.
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nobody opposed? Then we will consider each of those applications immediately after the public hearing closes.
Makes more sense.
Okay. Let's deal with the minutes from the last meeting. I didn't see anything immediately.
There was something.
Anybody else? I've read the minutes, Dave, and I think they're suitable the way they were submitted. I move that way exactly.
I'll second.
Second by Ian.
There was something in there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't here.
Abstain. Okay. So we're five, nothing, one abstention. Okay. Mr. Vice Chairman, can you read the call to this zoning application 23-11?
Yes. Application CZ 23-11 of TJ Donahue, applicant Stephen Stang, GSHP LLC owner for text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to Section 5 and 17 to allow special events as a necessary use in industrial I-1 districts. It's too high here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm the nominal applicant. Let the record show that Jeff Lizzata is here, the proprietor of the restaurant and present company, and Stephen Stang is here, the owner of Two Tunkses Road. This is an application which we worked on with town staff because we got in a situation where in an I-1 zone, assembly is not permitted. Mr. Stang and Mr. Lizzata have had events and weddings on that property before. It's a property which is right on the banks of the river, right between the old carpet factory and the highway. Town staff was very helpful. We went through it. The effect of this would simply be to allow special events in an I-1 zone. The type of special events that we talk about and use as a model were the agricultural special events which are allowed in Simsbury Farms. The way it would work would be that the applicant would go to the town staff, would go to the commission with an application which would identify an envelope where the special events could be, and then thereafter, town staff can give administrative approval to those. We expect that there'll be weddings there. We expect that there'll be multiple events. I think the language is pretty clear, and we have them here, and I'm here to answer any questions you have on it.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, do you have a map that you can cover the I-1?
I do. Okay. Thank you.
So I'm not specific to this property, but if we're doing a text amendment for all of I-1, I wanted to see what else is in an I-1 zone. So I think we have an airport.
Correct.
Repair facilities.
So then there's the parcel next to the skating rink. That's an undeveloped parcel. That's also an I-1 district currently.
And then the office complex on Hot Metal South, just north of Curly, and the new storage facility. There's a couple of old office buildings in there.
So if any of those other locations wanted to come in to do an event, they would still have to come or step?
To the commission for a special, excuse me, for a site plan amendment.
Okay.
But once they get one, then this is the allowed envelope, if you will, for things such as tents. And they'll still have to get whatever problem permit would need for, like, if a building permit is required for a tent, that needs the electrical requirement, if it needs the size requirement or capacity. They still have to go through their own permitting process for additionals.
You know, I think the point I would put on that is it's listed as accessory, so staff would work with the applicant, and then as part of the site plan process, the zoning commission would really need to determine if that use is in fact accessory to what's used. So if you're just locating in an office building, parking lot, what do you accessory do? We know that the Two Tunkses example, there's restaurants.
Right.
We know that that's an accessory use. So the zoning commission would help make that call. It would be part of your review process as part of the site plan process.
I'm just curious. Was there not a more targeted way of regulating this? A special exception? I'm just curious.
It wouldn't be a special exception because the use at all isn't allowed right now? So we have this unique situation in which they wanted to hold different events, not exactly quite sure the caliber. There were different weddings that were happening on the property, and there was no method for us to be able to say, yes, you can do that. So this is us trying to get a framework so we have an ability to permit it. This was the idea that we, as staff, worked with the property owner and applicant, tried discussing which, what they actually want to do and whether or not it should be allowed.
Yeah. The shorter answer, I think, is we can't just carve out this location at Two Tunkses for this kind of use or a text amendment just for this location. It's got to apply. It's got to apply throughout the zoning regs.
Okay. Well, it's just interesting because there are a restaurant in I-1, but almost everything else in I-1 is not a restaurant. It's a different picture.
Other comments? Questions, public commissioners?
How is the air show been happening?
It's been under a public gathering, apparently.
Okay. And that would be different in the process of the way?
Because that's on town, the town property, a town event versus this is a private event, a private property.
Okay. Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Hearing none. Motion to close the public hearing. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. The carries. Thank you. Okay. On application 23-11, we have a motion to approve this text amendment.
Do you have a motion?
Number two. Second? I'll second. I'll take a question. Bruce?
Go ahead.
Okay. Seconded by Bruce. Discussion.
I understand what staff is trying to do here. I have no issue with having events at their place of business.
Okay. It's very similar to the Agroson model. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Carries six, nothing.
I can't.
Do I need to read it? Or are we saying it's as submitted?
You made the motion.
We do have to set a date for the effective date.
Effective date.
So would you modify your motion with a date?
Absolutely. Want me to read it?
Yes.
I move that the zoning commission approve ZC 23-11, an application of TJ Donahue applicant and Stephen Stang with GHSP LLC owner for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to Section 5, industrial districts, and Section 17 definitions to permit special events as an accessory use in industrial I-1 districts. Effective date?
May 15.
We need to be able to publicly.
Yes.
Close.
To get past our period of periods.
May 15?
She's saying maybe 21st?
21st. May 21st.
May 21st.
Perfect.
Okay.
Seconded.
Revised and seconded again. Ian?
Sure. Seconded.
Okay. Let's revote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Carry six, nothing. And it has an effective date. Thank you. Okay. Application 23-15 of Niles Kelly. Mr. Vice Chairman, will you read the call?
Yes. Application CZ 23-15 of Niles Kelly, owner Kelly Johnson, applicant for a zoning commission special exception to permit a plus or minus 624 foot square foot detached accessory dwelling unit at 444 Bushy Hill Road, Assessor's Map B-18, Block 601, Lot 008, Zone R-40.
Okay. Is someone here to speak to this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm Niles Kelly. My grandfather lives with me. He's currently taking over.
444?
Yes, sir. He currently takes over the downstairs, and he requires a lot of special attention. So the intent is to get a special exception to finish the 624 for him and his live-in nurse in accordance with the ADA requirements.
Okay. I didn't see a kitchen at your place. Is there a kitchen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just put some pictures that the applicant had submitted and staff had curated just to kind of just get a sense of, so everybody knows what we're talking about on site. Location's a property that's got a number of outbuildings. You're familiar with 444, main house, the barn, and that is the subject of the application. Of course, that structure right there.
Okay. Questions of the commissioners? Just to confirm, you're not changing the footprint of the barn?
No, sir. Everything will remain exactly the same.
And are you removing the stairs to the second floor? And the second floor is not part of it?
Yes.
That's correct. Yeah. Just the bottom floor.
I have to ask you this.
Yes.
Did you realize the size that you're trying to lose? There's no question that that'll get rid well within the limits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all the drawings you submitted, usually that's about the number of drawings and stuff you see for accessory housing. You did it very thorough.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Yeah, that's all we're trying to do, so.
Okay. Other questions of the commissioners?
Is that? Well, I do have a question. Is that on town sewer or is it?
It's well.
Well, the well for the water.
Yeah, but yes.
And it's septic for the?
Not septic, no.
No, it's on town.
Yeah.
It's on the town.
Yes.
But there is a well?
Yes.
Interesting. I didn't know that. Any other questions of the commission? Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Anyone? Go on. Motion to close the public hearing. I'll move that we close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Seconded again. I have a motion to?
Well, when do we review the special exception? Do you want to do it after the motion or?
Right now.
You could include those findings as part of your motion.
Okay.
Is there a draft motion?
Yeah.
Bruce? It's in your packet.
No.
I'm happy to deliver one.
Thank you. You read my mind.
Okay. We do have that one. Anyone make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Let's see. The zoning commission, I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number 23-15 of Kelly Johnson applicant, Niles Kelly owner, for a special exception pursuant to Section 3 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to construct a plus or minus 624 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit at 444 Bushy Hill Road, Assessor's Map B-18, Block 601, Lot 008, Zone R-40. The commission finds the application special exemption has met the standard set in Section 3.5 and the special exception criteria in Section 12 and is subject to the following conditions. An administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Those special considerations are, we are looking at orderly development, if any kind of negative impact on property value, negative impact on public safety, traffic considerations, landscaping and buffers in relationship to utility systems, drainage systems, and impact on community facilities. And this application is not expected to have negative impacts on any of these considerations.
Second?
For a second?
Second. Jackie? Any further discussion?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. If you won't speak up, we can't hear you. We can hear the lady that you spoke, but everyone else can't.
Sorry.
Just move those microphones closer when you're talking.
Okay. We're voting on the motion that she made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Carry six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to application 23-03 of Hustle Holdings. Does staff have a report from the conservation and inland wetlands commission?
kind of parallel applications, once the inland wetland commission makes a decision, a report of action is transmitted to the zoning commission. So that was in your packets, and we do offer that report as Exhibit 17. It simply walks through the summary of the request, the timeline, and the action that on April 23rd, 25th, 2023, the county of Simsbury's Inland Wetland and Water Courses Agency approved application CC 29-22 by a vote of five to one with one abstention. And we again, the adopted motion with the findings are attached to your report. Make that part of the public record.
Thank you. At this point, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing so that we can deliver the motion to close the public hearing, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would, as always, if the applicant does have anything to offer as kind of last, to speak last, I would recommend that.
Is the amendment?
Frankly, you consider it at least.
Does anyone need to say?
Yes, sir.
Yes. With your permission. Yes. Thank you. For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury at the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson. And I first want to thank the commission for its patience and dedication in conducting this public hearing over several nights. At your last several meetings, you've heard from a number of speakers, and I felt that as our final statement, I wanted to review some of the information that was presented to you more than several weeks ago, just to make sure that the record is clear with respect to what this application has provided to this commission. We have submitted all of the required materials with respect to a site plan application. In addition to that, in accordance with the Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals procedure, what everyone calls a Section 830G application, we have also submitted evidence of the affordable housing need in Simsbury. We have provided a draft affordability plan. We have provided detailed civil engineering survey maps and plans, architectural plans, traffic study, landscape plans, stormwater management, photometric lighting plan, as well as a geotechnical report. You are also now, as part of your record, you have before you the approval by the inland wetlands and water courses agency for a wetlands permit for activities within the upland review area. We have no activity within in a wetland, but it was in their jurisdiction because of activities within 100 feet of the edge of a wetland. That agency voted five to one with one abstention to approve our application. You have a memo from the chief of police indicating that the chief has reviewed all the documents, including the traffic studies submitted by our expert, and has indicated that he has no concerns with respect to that traffic report. You have memos from staff indicating some outstanding items. I just want to confirm for the record that the applicant is ready, willing, and able to provide the appropriate easement along the front of Hot Meadow Street to provide for future sidewalk installation if that becomes feasible. You have a memo from the fire marshal indicating that all of his issues have been addressed, that he has no further concerns with the project. Police department had no outstanding issues. School district had no outstanding issues. Water pollution control authority had no outstanding items. Your staff has provided you with a summary of the plan of conservation and development demonstrating that this plan is consistent with provisions and goals within that plan. And the town engineer has reviewed this project and indicated that he has no further concerns. The important issue here is what a commission is appropriately authorized to consider in making a decision as to whether or not this matter satisfies the statutory provisions of 830G. And most importantly, there's a great deal of law in this regard. There've been a number of cases that have been litigated on over matters of 830G, both by approvals that were taken, were appealed by unhappy citizens, and denials that were approved by proposed developers. As you know, this subject property is located in a residential zone, which is not an exclusion area industrial zone under 8-30G. You're also aware that while our application started at 80 units, we reduced that number by 20%. We reduced the size of the building by 20%, and we actually increased the number of proposed parking spaces to a total of 102 spaces. There will be 61 one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units within the 64 units. 30% of those units, which rounds off to 20 units, will be dedicated as affordable in accordance with Section, Connecticut general statutes, 8-30G, for a minimum of 40 years. 10 of those units will be set at the 80% median income level, and 10 of those units will be set at the 60% median income level. Just a word on the parking spaces. When we were presenting to the inland wetlands and water courses agency, we proposed, and they endorsed and accepted, the idea that there would be a number of spaces that have porous pavement parking so that water will infiltrate. Those spaces will not be paved with bituminous, and our engineers shown those on the plan as such. We understand this commission had some concerns that we didn't have enough parking. We have obviously increased the amount of parking while reducing the number of units, and it's our plan that those last parking spaces will be built only if it proves that you're right and we're not. If we need more parking spaces, we can provide them. Otherwise, that will be green space until parking spaces are needed. We submitted a comprehensive traffic study, which was reviewed by your police chief. There was no concerns expressed by your police chief, and our expert determined that there was no safety issue, no sightline issues, and no adverse effect on the free flow of traffic movements on Hot Meadow Street. It's important to note that while numbers of members of the public stated that they had traffic concerns, this is an area where the courts have been very clear that expert testimony is needed, that people's speculation or some inherent belief based on their personal experience represents substantial evidence has been not confirmed by the court, in fact has been disregarded by the court, in that you are obliged to consider expert testimony on matters such as traffic. And in this case, you have two experts, ours, Mr. Vertucci, who is a licensed professional engineer and a traffic expert, as well as your police chief, who reviewed Mr. Vertucci's study and confirmed it. And in addition to that, as an additional safety blanket, if you will, this is on a state highway, so it's also going to be reviewed by the Connecticut Department of Transportation to confirm all of Mr. Vertucci's findings to allow a driveway access for this development onto a state highway. There is nowhere in the record that anyone has actually presented evidence of a specific harm or safety problem that results from this development. And that is the standard of the test with respect to an 830G application. What the courts have held is that when a commission is presented with expert testimony, even if neighbors disagree with that testimony, absent further expert analysis, a commission cannot simply reject the expert's opinion. Must be respectful of that. And the fact that not only is our expert certain of this, but your police chief is, should give you some certainty as to that conclusion. The same could be said for the concern about fire safety. This is a steel frame building built with non-combustible materials and fully sprinkled. It is not a wood constructed building. Your fire marshal extensively reviewed the plans. We participated in a meeting with him, and he's already provided you with his conclusion that he has no concerns with respect to fire safety at this property. I will also represent to you that it meets all building and fire safety codes as designed. And so, again, absent expert testimony, to the contrary, case law and the statutes indicate that this commission must treat that as substantial evidence of compliance. Evidence of general environmental impact, speculation, or general concerns do not qualify as substantial evidence. That's Connecticut Supreme Appellate Court case, American Institute case that quoted the court in that regard. Further to that, it's incumbent upon this commission to review the record and determine whether or not any specific public health or safety issues have been identified and validated by substantial evidence. If that is not the case, then under Connecticut general statutes, 8-30G, this application should be approved. There is no question that Simsbury lacks affordable housing in accordance with the state statutes. You have about 5.9% affordable units that have been identified by the Department of Housing State of Connecticut. And I appreciate that some people feel that the state is measuring by an improper standard, but that's the standard. If that's the matter, it needs to, that's a legislative change. That's not a change that this commission can make in its deliberations. Right now, Simsbury has less than the required 10% affordable. Right now, Simsbury has less than the required 10% affordable housing in accordance with the Department of Housing standards as established, and therefore you are susceptible to an application under Connecticut General Statute 8-30G. In order to deny this application, you would have to determine that the record is established by substantial evidence that there is more than a theoretical possibility of a specific harm to the public interest if the application is granted. If you find that to be the case, the next step for you is to determine what changes could be made to the plan to resolve that issue. Simple denial is not necessarily the next step in that process. You must review the record to determine whether what you have before you rises to a level of not just the mere possibility of harm, but actual harm to a substantial housing or public interest, and it also must be so significant that it outweighs the need for affordable housing. That's the standard that is applied in these particular applications. It's our position that this application presents no identified public health or safety concerns. Proposal has been reviewed by your town professional staff. No concerns have been raised, and you have no substantial evidence presented that indicates that any public harm or safety issues exist with respect to this application. And for those reasons, I would ask that this commission take affirmative action on this application and approve it. As now modified and presented, we've presented Mr. McGregor with modified plans to reflect the 64-unit development with 102 parking spaces. He has those plans submitted to him as well. I had prepared a memo that goes into greater detail into matters that I just presented. I'll make it part of the record. Again, on behalf of my client, I want to thank the commission for its patience and its consideration in this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, may I? I'm not going to be seated after it closes, so may I say something before the hearing closes, since I can't talk afterward? I would like one additional thing made part of the record.
Okay.
Thank you. May I approach the town planner to provide to the other side?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, one thing that I take issue with the applicant on is his interpretation that 830G requires us to have 10%. Actually, can I have that? I'm hearing from the back, they can't hear me. Kim, could I have the microphone?
We've had, excuse me, we've had this.
Correct. But what I provided you with tonight is a document that shows that Simsbury is actually, in addressing the cost burden of housing, we've made significant progress in the last 10 years. And in fact, we're one of the towns that has come down the most significantly in terms of cost, of housing cost burden. So that's what I presented here, and our obligation is to weigh not just the public health and safety and other legal considerations that we can consider as a commission, but then to also weigh that against the need for housing. Simsbury made extraordinary progress. In the span of 10 years, we came down 5.6% in terms of our share of cost, of housing cost burden. So I think that that's an important piece of information for the commission to have, and 10% was never supposed to be the requirement. It's just what other towns that had a lot of government assisted housing were entitled to be exempt from this. This is just a remedial statute. It's not a requirement.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
I think it's time to close the public hearing.
Well, yeah, we invited the public into a public hearing, so I think we've got to open it up.
No, we've had three and a half hours of public discussion. This, this public hearing was extended, this public hearing was extended to tonight to receive the inland wetlands report.
With all due respect, the community at large should have our opportunity to have our final say.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Chairman.
You told us that the folks who haven't spoken already.
There's nothing on the agenda that says that you are only accepting the inland wetlands.
Commission? It's up to the commission.
How long that we open?
Do we continue?
This meeting. Further to the next.
Well, it's just we're not, we will not close.
Especially from the folks who've never spoken before.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would ask is that I have the opportunity to speak before you close the public hearing.
We have a public hearing, and the commission has decided to hear additional testimony. So if there's anyone in the public. The commission has decided to hear additional testimony from the public this evening. So if anyone would like to speak, please come up and state your name and address.
Joyce Palmasano for Nutmeg Court. As we've learned, at the recent April 25 meeting, the Simsbury Conservation Commission approved the vessel development application, which now brings us to the zoning board hearing. I attended that meeting and note that the decision to approve the application was made, was not made with unanimous enthusiastic approval. Some members abstained from voting, and some expressed ongoing concerns about potential unknown effects, detrimental effects of the project and the wetlands. At this meeting, the commission chairwoman instructed members to make their decision by weighing what is presented to us by the application and the supporting expert reports supplied by the applicant. I currently have a job for which I'm responsible for reporting medical and legal malpractice claim settlements to state boards, insurance departments, and federal agencies. I understand how expert opinions work. When defending a practitioner, counsel seeks expert opinions from medical authorities that have notable credentials and are qualified and knowledgeable on the matter. Both defense and plaintiff's counsel obtain several opinions, but will only use those that substantiate or defend their client's actions and present the best defense for their client. So expert opinions can vary depending on who you ask and what position you want to support or defend. The Conservation Commission accepted vessels' expert opinions without reviewing any research or opinions held by other experts or agencies. As one committee member expressed, the approval process for the commission members seems to rely on a trust of the information presented by the applicant. However, the Inland Wetlands and Watercourse Regulations for the town of Simsbury state in Section 10.1, Consideration for Decision, that the commission is not limited to consideration of just the application and supporting documentation, but may include public comments, evidence and testimony, and reports from other agencies, staff, and commissions. Section 10.2, Criteria for Decision, states that the commission shall take into consideration all relevant facts and circumstances.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I'm just about done.
The inland wetlands has forwarded to us a five to one decision.
I know, but it's how it was done that I'm addressing, and I'll be done shortly. The Conservation Commission made no mention of consideration of the information and concerns expressed by the citizens of Simsbury during the town hearings and sent through numerous emails and letters to the board. Many townspeople took the time to research and obtain relevant information and data from reliable sources. Topics of concern included the impact on the wetlands, light and noise pollution on the wetland inhabitants, along with inadequate parking for residents, fire protection, and traffic concerns. Last paragraph. I am requesting and am hopeful that the zoning board will listen to and consider the numerous letters, emails, and comments made by concerned citizens when they review and make their decision on this application. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone in the public and for the board. My name is Pete Harrison. I'm actually the director of Desegregate Connecticut, which is a pro-homes coalition. We do meetings and advocacy across the state on issues of building more affordable housing. As this board is, of course, aware, at a statewide level, we have a housing crisis. In Simsbury, Connecticut, we have a housing crisis. What's a little bit unique for me tonight is I'm also a resident of Simsbury. I live about a mile down the street from this proposed development. I am here to strongly suggest supporting the approval for this project. I can go into the details, and it's been brought up, of course, in front of this board and by others, about the level of affordable housing under the statute 830G. As a practical matter, of course, case law is strongly suggestive, particularly under the amendments, that this was going to get passed anyway at some point. But I want to step back for a second and just say, my experience living in Simsbury, I would not be here unless this board built more multifamily housing in Simsbury. I live in an apartment building that was approved by this board, not more than, I think, three or four years ago. I grew up in Avon, I lived down in New York City for a very long time, came back to take up this job with my wife and my 13-year-old baby. We love this area. My parents are still here. They're elderly. Finding a place to afford to start our lives here is very important. There are not a lot of homes at any level of income in Simsbury that are available. There are not really homes available to purchase, let alone to rent. I'm grateful for the fact that I can find an apartment. I was on a waitlist for nine months to get into the complex. So I know personally firsthand and professionally that we do need more homes in Simsbury. No presentation, no proposal is perfect. We can quibble over design. We can quibble over good faith concerns that members of the public have about traffic, about the wetlands. All of those things are incredibly important to get right in any development, and under all of the local plans, under the state statutes, that has clearly been satisfied under the circumstance, and I really respect how much you've given for public comment in a number of settings outside of kind of the standard place. You were trying to get this right, and I know from the public really appreciates those efforts. Under this circumstance, I think you have gotten it right. There will never be a perfect scenario of what something looks like, where it goes. People fear change in a certain degree, but this is a project that has gone through the necessary process. It's something that I know professionally and personally Simsbury would benefit from. I'm not just saying eat your vegetables. I'm saying this is something that will benefit the town. We know that these are homes for young people, particularly since they're one-bedroom apartments, starting out their careers, seniors staying close to grandkids, which is very important to me. So we know that these homes are going to be used, frankly, by residents. As the standards go, most of the folks probably moving into these homes are people either living at home with their parents, commuting a long distance from work and living in the town. These are all people we want in Simsbury that are probably already here that are contributing to this community. So I want to keep that in mind, as folks that have very good faith concerns, that there are folks that are going to be benefiting from those homes. Because I suspect, that, you know, pointing fingers, I suspect there are probably folks that resisted the apartment that I live in under certain circumstances, traffic, wetlands, et cetera. And it's fine. It's lovely. It's been great. It's afforded my wife, my child, and I, my dog, the opportunity to live in Simsbury. We'd love to stay here and find a home at some point. We'll see how that goes. But this was an entry point for a wonderful community that I'm grateful for, and I know that's going to be the case for the 60 odd apartments here. So I really appreciate all the effort put into that. I appreciate the good faith concerns folks have, but I think this is a really good thing for Simsbury, and I strongly recommend the board approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sharon Thomas. I live at 42 Brettonwood Drive. So I'm going to be very short and say that, you know, a number of us, I think, are here not to say that we don't want affordable housing. Personally, I think it's the amount of apartments that are being added. I think we've had a number of apartments that are here. I think that this project could have been designed in a way that we even have less than the 60. It could have also been designed in a way that there, instead of apartments, maybe they were homes that were being built, that could have been rentals. But more importantly, regarding what the gentleman said about safety concerns, at the last meeting, there was a homeowner that was here that spoke about potential harm to her property and her home, and I don't know that I heard tonight how that was being addressed. And maybe the commission has reached out to her, but I do believe that as someone who lives in the town already, and this complex being built aside her home, safety should be a concern. Because, and going back to what the gentleman here said, I don't think that there's a denial that we want other people to move in and to live in apartments. It's really about the number of apartments that we have in this community. And that's what our real concern is. And so when we talk about affordable, let's not just say affordable is apartments. Affordable for some of the folks coming up needs to be rental homes. And so let's consider a little, I want to say, a little diversity in what we're building.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kate Tortland, and I live at 246 Farms Village Road. I am a lifetime Simsbury resident. I grew up here. My grandfather taught in the high school here, so I'm coming at this from maybe more of a, I would say, emotional perspective than a legal one. But as a lifetime Simsbury resident and actual member of the lower-income group being discussed today, I felt the need to speak in opposition to this proposal. This project with its supposed attainable options is not, in my opinion, about helping struggling people. It is an attempt for landowners and developers to make a quick buck. We need more housing, there is no doubt. I think that is very, very much agreed upon. But by creating apartments of this ridiculously small size and priced similarly to other options with more space in town, it is lowering the standard of living for this price point even further, in my opinion. If we're going to be creating accessible housing, it should be something that at least attempts to preserve the history, feeling, and integrity of our beloved town. We are saying with this that all someone should expect for $1,200 to $1,600 in Simsbury is 575 square feet and one window. I believe we can do more than this and are better than this. I love Simsbury, and I want to be able to afford to stay here, like this is my town. I want to stay here, but not at the expense of this town's integrity. We have handed enough to developers. Let's not hand anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Aiden Ocksoy, and I'm three Mathers Crossing. I live right down the road from there. I'm a new resident to Simsbury. Three years. So I just have more, just questions I'd like to pose for consideration that may not have been asked before. So I guess the larger question is, you know, I understand the gentleman's point is that the structure itself is sound and everything I's dotted and T's crossed, and everything works out fine within the structure itself, bounded within the structure itself. So then the question is, you know, expanding that conversation to the town itself. I understand there's a town charrette, and so the question I would have is how does this fit into that town charrette with respect to some apartments like Powder Forest, the Highcroft over there? Doesn't seem to be positioned right next to a residential home, as would this one be positioned right immediately next to some residential homes there? So that raises a question of, well, congruency for the town in general. And then the number of 60 units is, does raise a question as to why 60 and what percentage of the total deficiency that is claimed to, that Simsbury's claimed to have, all the affording, affordable units, does this 60% account for? And does the solution to that proclaimed deficiency, should it be 60 units in one location next to a house right down the road from quite affordable homes? My, my house, $225,000, I pay $1,600 a month, the same I, same I paid for one-unit bedroom at the Highcroft. So to me, that was affordable, three-bedroom. So, but also, I just wanted to highlight, it seems like, you know, Simsbury's unique character has the better chance, those better ABC, the Better Chance program, that seems like a wonderful, unique to Simsbury perhaps, I don't know if it's, you know, how widespread it is in Connecticut, alternative offering to the, to the solution of opening up. Connecticut, alternative offering to the solution of opening up Simsbury. Those are my only points for consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's me again, once again. Okay, I just want to stay on the record. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Ann McDonald, I live at 3 Tamarack. I am in the Hazel Meadow community. I am not opposed to this development, and we do need affordable housing in here. And I'm telling you, when I'm once retired from the post office, which I make not much money, I might, I will probably live in a rental if once I want to get rid of my affordable house that I already live in, my so-called chicken coop. But anyways, I just want to, you know, I'm not opposed to development, but I feel that it still needs to be scaled down even further. And I want to talk about encroaching on the property to the north. That's our property. We own that area. It's on a hillside. So if you see the diagram here, we have an overlay. We have about 15 trees that are along the critical, along the bank. And I'm telling you, once they start grading, let me back up a little bit, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bouncy. But when you talk about trees, you know, their critical root structure, or whatever their, what do you call it, tree protection area can expand way beyond even the height of the tree. So once all this grading starts and everything, we have the 15 trees along the edge, and they're start grading and whatever, all those tree roots are going to be disturbed. And they will, they will probably die within two to five years. I am using, this is my expert testimony, thank you. I got it from the Connecticut Gov. website, and it's about tree planting and conservation, and about how grading and tree, and machinery and construction can kind of take care of tree roots, and they will die within two to five years. And what I'm saying is, that bank will no longer exist as it is today because the grading of the tree roots will cause the soil to erode behind it, and the trees will die. So trees can stabilize the soil and prevent erosion. They can decrease stormwater runoff through canopy interception and root zone absorption. They can moderate temperature changes and provide shade. They can moderate the effects of sun and the wind. They can provide visual buffers, which, without these 15 trees, just those, well, there goes our property value even more because nobody's going to want to buy a house that's sitting right across, they can clearly view the 100 cars and the huge building. That's why I'm saying, I'm not opposed to the project, it just needs to be scaled back even further. Like I said before, 20, 30 apartments, 40, 45 parking spaces. Get yourself off the Upland River Review. We won't have to worry about pollution there, anything. And this, the bank would be stabilized. Not, because eventually, five years down the road, when these trees start to die and the root systems start to crumble, the whole bank starts giveaway, well, we're both going to have a problem. And who's going to pay for that in the Hazel Meadow community to fix all that, the bank? Is that going to be our responsibility? Because I'm telling you, that $50,000 bond they're proposing won't even cover it. My brother had a house on the river in Maryland. Somebody, a previous owner, took all the trees down. It was going to cost him $1 million to fix that bank. He just threw his hands up, said, "House for sale," and he's leaving. But, you know, that's what, it's not, $50,000 is not going to cover anything to replace the trees nor the bank. And that's our property that they're destroying. So I'm saying, I would like the project scaled back. I'm not opposed to the development. You know, it's going to look hideous? Sure. You want to build it? I'm willing to compromise. It's not a good fit for that place. Also, the trees can provide habitat for wildlife, so whatever lived there, gone. It can filter pollutants from the air and produce oxygen, gone. It can preserve and increase property values by increasing aesthetic values. Like I said, we're missing the trees? There goes our property value. And that is substantial reasons not to approve this at the scale it's at. Please, consider scaling it back even further than the 64. Make it, make it, you know, a requirement. So going on, again, my, this is from Soil Erosion from the Connecticut State of DEEP. So I stress, under construction activities, exposed trees to a variety of stresses and conditions which may injure or cause a tree to decline in health and die within two to five years. The above-ground impacts, construction-related conditions exerted on the trees above the ground can cause significant damage. Excessive thinning or removing of most trees from a group of, from a group may leave remaining trees subject to wind throw, and it is best to retain groups of trees rather than individuals. All 15-year trees will be gone. Equipment damage to tree trunks and lower branches increase the likelihood that wood-boring insects will attack and damage or kill the tree, and allows path of entry of disease and decay. Once, once those start being infested with insects, then it'll affect all the other trees within the wetland as well. It can have below-ground impacts. So in natural growing conditions, root, tree roots extend out from the trunk of a distance of one to two times the height of a tree. About 90% of the working roots of those trees that take in essential water and air and nutrients are usually located within the top 12 inches of soil. Construction-related activities within a tree's root zone can cause significant damage. There will be significant excavation on this lot. So if that tree is 18 inches wide, it'll have a tree root zone of beyond 30 feet. So that's way into their property, of course, but you're, you're actually causing the whole bank, the whole bank's going to give way within year, up, you know, as years go, come on. It might not be the first two years, but after that, you're really going to start seeing a significant difference. During the very first, and I'm going to mention wetlands because there was a scientist that talked that night, that, he said that all the grading, was he, let me back up for a second. He said that the grading would affect the tree roots in the area. I lost my place. Sorry. Oh, here it is. He got up and, I think, let me back up a little bit. So Kyle Testerman asked him about drier conditions on those trees also, because drier conditions would save, change the soil content or the moisture in the soil, which would create it to become very dry. And when soil is dry and it gets rained on, it just tends to wash a little bit more, which then, as it washes away, the roots will become exposed, and then insects could enter the roots and end up, the trees will give way. So, so they were talking about rerouting the water. It would, would areas that were originally benefited by the water would be affected by drier conditions. So, but you could have, and then Kyle said, but you could have a change in the soil moisture on the north slope by diverting the water. And the scientist said, sure, you could. You could, you could have some change, probably see that impact during the first 20 feet or so of the edge. So then Kyle says, tree removal would have a larger impact on soil quality. What impact would removing four trees within an Upland Review area have on the soil? And the scientist answers, it would open up the tree canopy, soil would be drier, get more sun, and so you would need to amend the soil, plant more around it, or whatever. That's not going to help, he's not going to be planting our property to replace all those trees that we're losing. So back on that. As far as excavating, excavations may cut a large portion of the root system, depriving the tree of water and nutrients and increasing the chance of disease and wind throw. If you compact the soil at the root systems, even a limited operation of construction vehicles or equipment within the root zone of a tree will compact the soil severely, crushing the structure of the roots. This in turn inhibits the flow of air and water within the root system, altering, and also altering the soil environment to the detriment of the tree. So breakage of roots can be caused by the operation of heavy equipment within the root zone of a tree. Also, construction chemicals or refuse disposed of in the soil can change the soil chemistry and be toxic to trees. So moving on. So I want to also reiterate what I found in the Connecticut Law Library about encroachment. They cannot disregard the welfare of trees, even if they are on an adjacent property. And also, this would include those tree trees, the three trees that are in the middle of the parking lot that they want to keep. After you move all the equipment around those, you could, the three that they have planned up, the outside of the lights were the outside, at the end of the parking lot were the light, I don't know, with your little pointer thing isn't here, but anyways. After you drive the construction equipment all around those and try to make a parking lot, those are going to be gone as well. I want to ask about the 12-foot side yard setback that we're supposed to have. They say the building is 80 feet. For me, a 12-foot setback is 12 feet. That means it's pure grass or whatever existed there now. When you dump riprap material, construction material, within two feet of the border of the property, that's still within the, that's, that's within 12 feet. That's not a 12-foot setback. If you're starting your construction at two feet from our border, that's not giving us a 12-foot setback. I don't care if the building is 80 feet. 12 feet means nothing to go on. I understand 12 feet would mean no construction material. So riprap, which is stone and whatever else they have, drainage pipes coming out, all that is within two feet of our property. That's not a 12-foot setback. So whatever happened to that? Back to the tree roots. If, they have a retaining wall. Some of it is up to six feet high, some of it goes down to zero or half a foot. When you trench that, so any tree roots that might be left, the top left-hand corner shows you what's going to happen to tree roots when you trench a wall, you know, a retaining wall. So if a retaining wall is six foot high, an eighth of that height would have to be in the ground. So you're going to have to go pretty deep, so pretty much you're just going to take off the tree roots. Basically, all those trees along our border will end up with half the root systems that they have now. Yeah, they are on the other property, but they benefit both pieces of property, not just ours and holding up the bank, but they also benefit that property by providing shade, holds the moisture, they provide habitats for animals, whatnot. So they will be non-existent within five years, I'm sure. And see, I talked about the $50,000 bond, which won't even cover what's going to happen when the bank needs to be replaced. I don't know what they consider, what they would do to replace it all. And it, when you replace all that bank, it's not going to be the same natural habitat that it is now. And when you open it up, you don't have that canopy, and all the soil's dry, we're back to wetlands. I'm sorry, they didn't consider this. That will no longer be the same wetlands that it is right now. So, and also the storm drain system. I'll just skip over to that. They talked about the parking lot pavers that they want to, they don't want to have the, they want to have like the edge of the parking area that was along the upper, Upland Review area. Now they're going to make it grass for now, but they're going to make it a parking area when they need it. Well, of course, they're going to need it because they have 64 apartments, and about 102 parking spaces would probably be just right. So they're going to end up paving them. And when you put pavers down, that's, that's not a really great filter. The oil that leaks from the cars just right through the pavers, and being it's right next to the bank, it can leach out into the soil. And there has been groundwater that has been recently found there in the last testing. So groundwater, I don't know, you go figure. It's only going to leach out, it's going to be a very, this is my expert testimony from the Stormwater Quality Manual, which you use, the 2004, and it says that pavers are not good for, to, to, you know, filter out oil and grease, right here, or any dissolved pollutants. So that's from what they use, the same manual. And they are typically placed in a sand bed and gravel based to enhance infiltration, but, like I said, it only, it won't filter out oil and grease very well or any other dissolved pollutants. Like I'm saying, it's okay for the development, it just, our bank, you're destroying the piece of property which they don't even own, and they're not, it's not like they're giving us $500,000 for it and taking it on the whole responsibility. That's our property, we'd like to keep it intact. As far as the pavers, they do not provide significant levels of pollutant removal. This is from the manual. Some treatment is provided by the absorption, filtration, and microbial decomposition at the base subgrade interface. But when you're talking about it leaks down, it's so close to the edge of the bank, it will leach out more readily than if it was a piece of property that was straight across. You're talking a bank right next door. So snow removal is difficult, also on the paver, since plows may catch the pavers and such, so it's going to be tricky plowing that area. It's not applicable to low permeable soils or prone to frost action. And they said that that's, that whole land is susceptible to frost. It's a potential failure due to improper setting of the bricks and such, and the design and construction maintenance. There's a risk of groundwater contamination from using pavers, depending on subsurface conditions, land use. And it should not be used in public drinking water, okay, it's not used in aquafor. And it's not usable, suitable for land uses or activities within the potential for high sediment or pollutant loads or in areas of subsurface contamination, which, snow pretreatment? That's pretty heavy contaminant that could sleep, seep through the pavers. So I'm done. I'm done. But I'm just saying that if you talk about substantial reasons, the destruction of our property is substantial, please move it back. I'm not opposed to development, not opposed to affordable housing. I'm going to be living in some later on, but I would like it off the whole area of the root systems because that's a detriment to our property. Thank you.
Excuse me, what, Tucker?
I'm concerned that if we put this later to the night, people will go home, we won't be able to hear them, meaning we'll actually have less public input than if we made the limited public testimony to a few minutes so that we don't go late in the night and force people to have to leave. That's just my suggestion.
Okay, well, that's.
It should also be new material.
Yes, I think we've heard all of that last time.
Okay, I'll be brief. Good evening. My name is Catherine Godickson, 7 Nutmeg Court. I have spoken about this before, but plans have changed for this application. So my comments will pertain to the parking lot and the snow storage. After the public spoke first, the developers submitted an offer during the wetlands hearing on April 4, 2023. I'm commenting on it now, since we were not given an opportunity to respond to this change before Marjorie Winters closed the hearing after Vessels made their proposal. The main changes that Vessel proposed were the reduction of units to 64 and the parking space allocation. The parking lot size would stay the same, as you can see, with 29 parking spaces designated as reserved parking. This was their way of hoping they wouldn't need those spaces in the future, but if they did, they would still have them available. I don't believe they mentioned that these spaces would now be used for snow storage during this proposal. We later discovered it on their new site maps. So where you see the orange, yellowy-orange, those are the parking spaces that are reserved and where they will put the snow. So I have many concerns. The parking lot size remains unchanged, which is too big for the parcel. You can't really see everything in detail because of how light it is in here, but you can see where the parking lot is, and it's much bigger than where those orange spaces are. The apartment building is also gray, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. The bio-retention area is in front of it. That's gray because at some point, they were talking about plowing the snow on that, and I guess they decided that wasn't a very good idea since there is no way for a plow to get in there. And there's greenery on the far, on the eastern side. At one point, they were talking about pushing the snow in there. I don't know how a plow would have gotten in there, but at any rate, there was going to be. to be plant material there, so that wouldn't have worked. So, so number two, the inadequate capacity designed to store snow is a concern, along with the drainage of unfiltered snow melt and stormwater from the parking spaces used for the new storage area. 26 of those spots span, as you can see, most of the length of the parking lot. They're very close to our property along the edge of the bank of Second Brook, as you can see. So I believe it is to be determined whether they will be grass or porous pavers. Either choice will render them unfiltered as they leach stormwater or snow melt that is treated with calcium chloride on the land very close to our property. They're built on top of the Upland Wetland along our bank that leads to the wetlands. We wonder what happened to the original landscape design that included a line of trees to be planted along their north boundary, our north boundary, their north boundary, sorry, their north boundary, next to our bank. Now all house mountains of treated snow or leach unfiltered stormwater. As you can see on the slide, the impervious surface of the parking lot dwarfs the small area for snow storage in orange. Realistically, this is nowhere near enough space for all that snow. Say it snows and we get two to three feet, that means the reserved parking storage area is already filled with snow. It will then be filled with an enormous amount of snow from the entire parking lot. They do not have enough space. They never have had enough space. It will not fit. And what happens if they do need the spaces for their tenants, as we suspect they will? They won't even have that tiny space anymore. Where will it go? Four, the water from the roof appears to head to our southeast corner via the bioretention. Oh, you can't see it. Can you lift that up a little? Yeah, so anyway, it's a, yes, via the bioretention basin in a pipe that will drain straight onto our property. You can see it, yeah, it goes along the bottom of the building and then straight up out to that part. So some of our homeowners already have issues with flooding, and that's not the only place there's going to be water traveling into our property. But that one is in particular something I just noticed on a site map. So as I said, some of the homeowners already have issues with flooding. As a budding property owners, how are we expected to accept and absorb the water generated by their roof? I find it unacceptable. And five, the wetlands commission decided to add considerations, not conditions, and I believe there is a difference there, for the developer to order in order to give them an approval. It was something they wanted to pass on zoning to implement. One of the wetlands commissioners stated that if there is an overflow of water, the main pipe, which you see in the center almost of the length of, yeah, it's right there. That's the big one. So at any rate, he said if there's an overflow of water, the main pipe could cause polluted water to exit that pipe at nine gallons a second, which will be a waterfall coming down our property, which will cause immense erosion. So when asked by George McGregor what they could do to grant approval, they decided to add two more pipes to reduce the velocity, but not the fact that now we will have four pipes pushing water that is polluted onto our property. We also must deal with the constant leaching of their storm tech chambers, which will also saturate the underground soil, helping to destabilize our bank and pollute groundwater. This is absolutely not an acceptable solution for us as adjacent landowners, and it never will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Kelly Rothers at 14 Nutmeg Court. So there's a couple of things I would like to address. First, it's never been about affordable housing. I've stated that many times at fourth. Always been about the scale of the project, always been about scale of project. It's like me putting on my jeans in the morning. It's just too big, it's not going to fit. Okay? So it was stated in the first hearing, why we asked it needed to be so big, the statement was, cuts into our profit. It cuts into our profit. So let's not pretend that this is about affordable housing. This is about trying to maximize the amount, the most amount of money out of a certain space. Second, addressing the bias. Always question where your information comes from. All of their experts paid by them presenting their information. We have made multiple requests, common sense, legitimate requests to have independent surveys of traffic and wetlands devoid of any kind of sphere of influence from homeowners or from Vessel. And I think that is a fair request that has never, ever been addressed or answered. The other question about liability. I'm the homeowner that gets the house destroyed. So we've asked also many times, when or if things happen, who is liable? Who is responsible? Once again, has never been answered. It's never been addressed. And these are very pertinent questions that I think deserve to be addressed and asked and, and, and answered. And I also have a question about permits. Permits are required for any constructions to safeguard the community and assure standards that are met. Due to the nature of development proposed by Vessel, they are required by the state to obtain specific permits since the application involves federal and state funds and is located next to a sensitive west wetland, excuse me. Vessel applied for a permit with DEEP in December of 2022 filing 94058, determination number 202212391. The application is based off of current NDDP, NDDB, National Diversity Database, and the survey conducted by Vessel of the wetlands. Vessel study is biased and poorly conducted, and any permit issued off the premise of this study is fruit from the poisonous tree. Vessel experts surveyed the site October 2022 for six hours and on the eastern portion of the property, nowhere near the proposed development site. The expert stated that he was not granted permission to fully survey the site, but conveniently forgot to mention that he never asked for permission. According to the application, new information may result in additional review and new modification, restrictions, or conditions may be necessary to remain in compliance with certain state permits. Once again, we have asked several times for an independent study, we're not getting them. Current research projects and new contributors continue to identify additional populations of species and locations of habitats of concern. So yes, I'm bringing in the wetlands, but it pertains to zoning because it pertains to permits. Okay, they did find freshwater mussels on the site. However, there are several species that have not been surveyed or cataloged, such as the wood frog, the mating season is in March, the blue spotted salamander, mating season in March and April, the five line skink, mating season April and May. Those studies were not conducted. Therefore, there might be endangered species on that area that have not been identified. Okay? In essence, the data used to determine the viability of this permit is insufficient. So the question is, do they have this permit? I can't build a deck without having permission and a permit. So Vessel should have to make sure that they have all their permits in place before any consideration or approval of this should be done. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Sylvain. I'm at Six River View Circle.
Please, please, can you remain at the?
I have to just show a couple of photos, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you very much. I'll be real brief, I'll be over in one minute. So here's a couple of photos I just wanted to show. This is the bike path behind the proposed building, and there is a drop-off. The bike path only is about 11 feet wide. So there's been some consternation of what kind of fire vehicles or respondent vehicles would be to this development here. And one of the key things I wanted to bring up is the access through our association. And you can see through this photo here, this was actually taken last weekend, second weekend in a row of flooding that's going on. Supposed to be a 100-year flood two weekends in a row now. So if an ambulance wants to come in here, as you can see, it is flooded. Those gates are removable, two people can easily move that pole and everything. But if it's the dead of winter, that's going to freeze, it's dark, there is no access here, it's just not safe. That's one of the things I wanted to bring up, and one more photo. Okay. And that is of the wires that are going to be behind this building. So again, the respondent vehicles, if there is an unfortunate event of a fire, as you can see to the right of those poles there, the building's going to be sitting. So this has never been addressed before, and I just think that's something that should be taken up. And in closing, just want to bring up is, well, the town, well, she already brought that up, so I'll, I'll skip over that. And these units, like I said, are going to be non-ownership, so they will not be a pathway to generational wealth, as like I do, I own my own house there. So I just wanted to bring that up. These are 575 feet, square feet units, and again, that's what I had to say about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this close enough that you all hear me? I'm Sally Van Meter. I have worked for our town planning and zoning commission for 23 years, sat on many of these hearings. Many developers came before us. The one thing I want that is very clear to me over my experience is a developer never comes to a commission with an application that he really believes is going to be approved. They come with the biggest application that they can come into, knowing it's going to be skinned down. And this one certainly looks like it needs to be skinned down. Now, I'm, I haven't been in Sims very, very long. I'm 82 years old. I moved here to be with my grandchildren. We moved to High Cross, so I'm not against apartments. But this seems ridiculous to me. Having sat through so many commissions with the same type of development, people coming in, I don't know his, their particular law firm, but I do know a tour.
Please keep your comments to the application.
Well, I, I hope I am. What did I say that wasn't to the application?
You haven't said anything about the application.
Pardon?
I, I haven't heard much about the application.
I'm sorry, but what I'm trying to say to you, that these applications come in and they can't possibly believe that it's going to be accepted by the community. But they come in with a big application, knowing they're going to have to reduce it, which they always do. And this particular one, if the people here don't keep on their feet and fighting against it, it will go through. I don't know about all you commissioners, where you feel on this, but I have feeling you've already made up your mind. I don't even know what commission I'm, I'm talking to. Is this the planning commission? Zoning commission? Oh, yeah, I've sat on many zoning commissions. But anyway, I, I don't have much to say. It's just that you've got to be, you've got to fight for it. If you really feel this way, this is your community. They aren't your community, you're the community. Well, there are other ways you can fight for what you want.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
I'm the chairman.
I'm done.
And we are elected.
By us.
By you. Right.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I just wanted to follow up on the flooding point. I mentioned at the last hearing that I was a co-chair of the Science and Technology Working Group for the Governor's Council on Climate Change. And one of the main conclusions that we had about the impacts in Connecticut is that increased flooding and increased precipitation and severe storms we're going to be having. So this is a problem that's going to be increasing, and we've already, all of us have already seen that it has been increasing. And so that is going to be very harmful to the neighbors that are going to be impacted by that. I wanted to also validate what the person said about the, the bank and the critical root zone and the excavation and compaction of the soil and how that's going to be impacting the area around that. Related to the last comment about the NDDB, the Natural Diversity Database, that really needs to be done, it's seasonally specific, what species are there? And if you don't find any records in the Connecticut NDB, it doesn't mean that nothing's there. It could be, it's more likely it means that no one has ever looked. So that's, that's one point that I wanted to make. Another point that I wanted to make was related to the bus. And I don't know if one of the conditions of this code or this application is related to the proximity of the bus stop, but I'm very familiar with the bus schedule. I bought my house next to a rail trail so that I could bike and take the bus. But the bus service in Simsbury is not good. There's, it's great, the buses are great, we should all take them more, but there's no service on the weekends. It's not a functional kind of transportation if you don't have a car. So if this is counting on people to be able to take the bus, that's not maybe realistic. The other point that I wanted to make was, I'm not sure about the track record of this company or how long this type of building is intended to last. I know they talked about 40 years. I also know they're an LLC, which kind of means you can fold your tent anytime you want, so I'm not sure what the kind of long-term obligation has. But one thing that I found uncomfortable is suggesting that building more buildings in building this building is going to be good for the climate, and we should tell our young people that this is something that's going to be good for the climate. And first of all, building more stuff, period, is not good for the climate or our ecology. So we should build the things that we need and do the best job we can and make them really long-lasting, because disposable things are not good for the long term. So I think I'll just leave it there, but those are some of my concerns. What's the lifespan? How is our environment going to be changing? How is this not taking that into account and taking into the account to some of the things that are there now and the people that are there now? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, Susan Van Cleef, 6 Smaller Circle, that's in Terriffill, so I'm not a neighbor, but I'm, I've been listening to people. I'm not going to reiterate what everybody said, but I think you've heard a lot about some of the things you're supposed to consider, like safety and health. I think you've heard a lot of that, and I hope that you have identified it really clearly. Last time I spoke, I left out a detail, and I'm just going to say it really quickly. The town has built well over 1,000, probably about 1,400 units in the last 10 or 12 so years. We have 28 deed restricted. So we have not done our job. We have not done what we had to do. Building, building apartments didn't do what they needed to do. And now people say there's too many apartments. So I don't know what the towns are going to do moving forward, but there needs to be some action and it needs to be things that are forward-facing that we see. I know that has nothing to do with the application. So this is what I want to get to. In March 2020, the zoning board submitted comments about Senate Bill 1024. I don't really remember exactly what that was. But in those comments, you literally wrote, "This bill will result in citizens having little say in their life's major asset, their residence." You wrote that. Some of you are on the committee, maybe not all of you at that time. That's what you wrote. And there are quite a few citizens here today who would like to have a say in their major life's asset. There is literally one individual, if this building is built, will walk out their front door to view of a monolithic four-story back of this building. And I want you to just think about, would you want to be doing that? Is that something you would want to do? Even if you're a renter, would you want to do that? So it's up to you to decide. And you might say, hey, 830G has our hands tied, but I just really think you could at least ask them to shrink this building quite a bit more, make it shorter so you could have trees blocking it. There are so many things you could ask to do that will not affect the people living around this building, and that is related to their health. And that is, that's something you really need to think of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dylan Gagny from 434 Hot Meadow Street. And there's just three things I want to touch on real quick. I have a bear friend in town. And I think there's going to be a dumpster somewhere near the border of one of the properties. And I just don't know what that's going to be like, if they're going to be, that bear's going to get in there and track garbage all over the place, all the time? And do I need to pick all that up every single time that I get home from work? I don't know. And the other concern I had was just the utility system on the south side of the building. And it's not going to be making noise into my property at all hours of the day. Then, I don't know if there's a whole lot of space for, I don't know how many children are going to be living in this property, and there's not a whole lot of space for them to be playing, and, you know, it's just what kids do. And I'm not sure if they're going to be just overflowing into my yard, and I don't have any problem with kids playing, but I do have a problem with kids playing in my yard, and potentially, parents potentially suing me when they trip and fall on something in my yard. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[668.35][668.35](APPLAUSE)
Hello. My name is Jonah Leeper. I live at 6 Washman Drive. I'm a high school student here in Simsbury. I don't have a problem with affordable housing in general, and I think there are a lot of ways it can be done with respect for the community and the land. But this development does not do that. You've already heard about how it will impact the neighbors in the wetlands, but I think it's just a cash grab. It's on two acres. There's no, it's prefabricated, it's completely hideous, and there's no reason, looks completely out of place. There's no reason, there's no reason it should be done there. There's many, much more, better places to build, where you can build a well-thought-out apartment that can actually benefit the community. And this will just harm the community, and there's no reason that it should be built here. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.[716.23][716.23](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name's Jay Dixon, 6 Walker Drive. A couple of points to make. I want you to, first of all, I want to thank you for your service to our community. I'm lucky enough to volunteer in this community as well, and I appreciate what you do. However, with that, I think that the zoning board as the gateway to Simsbury in terms of allowing the building that has happened specifically on the Route 10 corridor, you failed us. You failed us miserably. And from a global perspective, let's think about what that failure is. We've let in approximately 10% increase in our population. Our fire department is stretched, our ambulance is almost nonexistent to many calls. I shouldn't say almost nonexistent, they are nonexistent to many calls. 30-minute wait times for people to get medical aid in this, in this town. In this town, Simsbury, what we all pay for taxes, 30 minutes. Why? Because you have allowed so many people to come in so quickly. And that's unacceptable. But you guys, as the zoning, that's your responsibility. You have a chance to say yes or no. And you are here for us. Agreed? You're here for us. That's why we vote the zoning commission in. So we've got that. The police department is stretched, adding in all these people, we've got bumper-to-bumper traffic. We've added in stoplights. We need more. We're going to have to widen the roads. The schools are stretched to their maximum capacity. School classes are increasing. The Board of Education budget is going up. Town taxes are increasing. This is not helping Simsbury. And if you believe that it is, you've got some incredible stretch of wool across your eyes. It's unbelievable. So let me ask you a couple of questions. One, if this building was being proposed to the town of Simsbury with no affordable housing, same design, would you guys even be contemplating this proposal? The answer is, of course, no, because there's a high-powered lawyer sitting here saying, "You must do this." And by the sounds of it, by the sounds of some of the rhetoric, you feel that you must do this. But again, we voted for you. We voted for you. So I'm going to take a quick scientific study, because that's apparently what we need. Who in this room believes that this should go through? Who does not want this to go through? Thank you.[884.18][884.18](APPLAUSE)
Hi, Adam Cohen, 5 Hazel Middle Place. I'd like to bring up a major safety concern that was brought up at previous meetings, and I haven't heard any answers. I have a great concern in regards to the setting up of individuals in a location with an inadequate bus line. The requirement of a personal vehicle is greatly needed, basically required, in that part of town. I work with and help individuals on the autism spectrum, and I find housing for them. I would, the majority of them live on SSI and low income. They do not have their own vehicles. I would never place them in this location, stranded away from grocery stores, pharmacies, all the basic needs. So why would the town allow that? Thank you.
Thank you very much.[948.93][948.93](APPLAUSE)
Elizabeth Peterson, 32 Fox Den Road. I just want to speak specifically to public safety. I've had the privilege recently of participating, still am, in the Citizens Police Academy. So I spent a lot of time at the police department, doing ride-alongs, dealing with dispatch. And I don't know if everybody knows this, the police, and I know Jay Dixon just touched on, the police department is severely understaffed. Severely. Just the other day, they had people out sick, they had people working non-stop. We have officers who aren't getting off sleep. So if we're going to jam 60, I don't even know we're set on 80 units, 60 units in, that's more people who possibly need more services. We don't have the current public safety to support adding that many people in, on top of the fact that we all know that we're getting hit repeatedly with catalytic converter thefts in our open parking lots, which is exactly what they're presenting here. I was on a ride-along just last week, and we were the only patrol car out for all of Simsbury, because the other ones were tied up, and another one was off-duty or couldn't be used. It's a severe situation, and this is not the time to be putting in a massive project like this, when we really can't even help ourselves sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1025.33][1025.33](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Mark McGrath. I live at 55 Cambridge Court. I live in an affordable housing project. Mine is an affordable housing. But in Cambridge Crossing, it's supposed to be 79 units, and about 30-something have been built.
Excuse me, would you address the commission, please?
I'm sorry. About 30-something have been built. First of all, I want to say, I want to commend you. I think the concept of what you proved for Cambridge Crossing was very creative, much better than what we have here. Here, Cambridge Crossing, you have houses on smaller lots than normal, in a community, in a great location. The houses are great. 20% of these houses are affordable housing. You have to be under a certain income limit, you pay lower HOAs. The concept is really good. The problem is the execution. Many of us, I'll tie it back together. Many of us residents there have met with Mr. McGregor to express our concerns. One thing we're concerned about is that what's in the plan, we want assurance it's going to happen. If everything happens, it'll be a model, community. The roads, we're concerned about the roads, whether they'll ever be decent. We're concerned about the drainage. You know, after a rainstorm, I encourage anybody to drive through there. We're concerned about lighting. We have no lighting. Drive in there at nighttime, see what it's like. We express our concerns to Mr. McGregor. There are other issues there, too. And the towns, I want to commend the town staff, they've been wonderful. They're trying to keep abreast, we've told them about certain problems, they've met with people, they've addressed them. But one of the problems, Mr. McGregor told me, he didn't say it was a problem, but apparently the bond is only $20,000. And we're thinking, what's going to happen when this development is completed? Developer walks away, or whatever. And the residents, we're going to be stuck with bad roads, bad drainage, we have no lights, the sidewalks haven't been completed. So I would encourage you, considering this, I mean, the concept is great here, too. We want, everybody wants affordable housing. But if you're going to do it this way, first of all, I would say the model of Cambridge Crossing is wonderful. It's very creative. But if you're going to, if you're going to let this project or any other project go through, have the bond be high enough, so your town officials have some, something to require the developer to do what has to be done. I hear $50,000. I mean, that's a joke. What can you do for $50,000? $20,000? You think $20,000 is going to make somebody do something? Whatever you do, you have to make sure that, you have to give the town officials what they need to force compliance, so things meet your standards. Okay?
Thank you very much.[1240.14][1240.14](APPLAUSE) Anyone else?
Yes, hi. My name is Kristi Tortland. I live at 246 Farms Village Road, and I would like to discuss the concept of affordable housing. The current minimum wage, which is going up this year, I believe, is $15 an hour. That comes to after Connecticut taxes, about $24,000 a year. $1,200 to $1,600, $1,200 to $1,600 a month for rent is not affordable housing. $2,000 after taxes a month is what you get on minimum wage. What does that leave you? For food alone. The cost of food per month is insane.
Excuse me, this is a zoning application.
I understand that, but I'm talking about affordable housing in regards to the zoning application. Thank you. I'm talking about the concept of zoning in regards to affordable housing, which this is not. So I would just like to make that clear. If we're going to talk affordable housing in Simsbury, yes, we need it, but this is not it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1292.42][1292.42](APPLAUSE) Anyone else?
Yes, hi. My name is Kristi Tortland. I live at 246 Farms Village Road, and I would like to discuss the concept of affordable housing. The current minimum wage, which is going up this year, I believe, is $15 an hour. That comes to after Connecticut taxes, about $24,000 a year. $1,200 to $1,600, $1,200 to $1,600 a month for rent is not affordable housing. $2,000 after taxes a month is what you get on minimum wage. What does that leave you? For food alone. The cost of food per month is insane.
Excuse me, this is a zoning application.
I understand that, but I'm talking about affordable housing in regards to the zoning application. Thank you. I'm talking about the concept of zoning in regards to affordable housing, which this is not. So I would just like to make that clear. If we're going to talk affordable housing in Simsbury, yes, we need it, but this is not it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1362.42][1362.42](APPLAUSE) Anyone else? Is someone over here?
Ladies and gentlemen, we've been together for a number of months.
Do you have your name?
My name is Josh Levy. I'm the Executive Vice President of Vessel. We've been together a number of months now, and I wanted to express my appreciation for your patience and consideration and professionalism, and for your feedback throughout the process in order to make this a better project. And I think that's part of why you're here, is to help make projects better before they get approved. And I think, together with the Wetlands Commission, you've done just that, and I want to express my appreciation for that. I also want to point out a few things, is that there's been a lot of discussion throughout the public comment about existing problems in the town, existing flooding, existing traffic, the theft of existing catalytic converters. And there's then been a presumption that in some way, those things can be attributed to a development that doesn't exist yet, which in a sense is quite troubling. But more troubling than that is that everybody who's complained about the potential development has started out by saying how much they want affordable housing.[1493.64][1493.64](LAUGHTER) How much they want affordable housing, how much they don't, you know, dislike affordable housing. But at no point does anybody ever come up with an idea of how to create it, or how to do something that creates affordability within a community.
Talk about the application.
The application, please.
The, the idea that there's been a, then a vote called amongst the people here, of the people here who evidently represent all 25,000 people in the community, is also somewhat troubling. But more importantly-
Talk about the application.
Please, please.
Hold him to the same standards you held up.
Same standards. Come on.
Shut people down, not talking about the application.
Who's side are you on?
It's clear.
Please, continue.
But more importantly, I think that there hasn't been an understanding, or people haven't necessarily been listening to all the professional testimony, associated with responding to the comments that have been made in multiple times throughout the process. And I understand that there is always fear and distrust in any new development, but if everybody takes that position in every community that you go to, then nothing new can ever be created, nothing new can ever come into a town. And you heard from a gentleman here tonight, who came to talk about how having an apartment in the community as an entry point into the community gave him a new place to live in a wonderful community that this is, and gave him the hope that maybe he can be part of this community for the future. And that's what housing like this does. It gives people an opportunity to be part of something that is wonderful, and to be part of something that is a terrific community, so that they too can benefit from the excellent things that this community has to offer, in the same way that the people who are here today have been. And that's what opportunity in this country has always been about. It's about giving people a foot up, a step up, into a life that creates an opportunity for them to have greater opportunity into the future. And so I would hope that we could see our way through to saying, instead of reasons to always say no to something, reason to support it. And I think there are a lot of those. And I hope that, you know, we're able to look at those and embrace a brighter future for people who need this type of housing, who haven't had the good fortune, as this gentleman mentioned, that he gets to own his home. Not everybody has that opportunity, and we want to create an opportunity for that.
Enough, folks! Enough! Come on! Bring them in! Do your job!
Please, please, please.
I'll, I'll leave it at that for the board. I'll leave it at that for the board, and I'll let our attorney finish up.
Yeah, where are you from?
Thank you. Thank you, that's enough, please.
My name is Ellen Gilbert. I live at 126 Hot Meadow Street. And I was not going to get up and speak, because I feel like I have spoken at Wetlands Committee meetings, I've spoken at zoning meetings, and I'm rather insulted by what was just said. I actually invite Vessel or whoever, come in and, and do something with the Hartford Insurance Company property. And that is my backyard. I am saying that with putting this many apartments on 1.97 acres of land, right next to, the piece of property itself is not level, and then it drops off right at the edge down into the brook. And so I, the Wetlands, they, they, pardon my verbiage, but they gave in with conditions of consideration and consideration- And consideration can be two seconds. So I don't have a lot of faith in that, what was agreed upon there and what was accepted. And I drive by, I drive by that piece of property every day, and I still, blows me away when you look at a thing up there and it looks like it's so big, and then you drive by and you realize that that parking spot is going to start so close to Hot Metal Street, and how much traffic is going to take place, especially when it's time to go to work and time to come home. And anybody who works in a restaurant and the waitresses get home and there's no parking spot left for them, and there's no way they can park and get safely back to the apartment. This is like common sense safety, and when the traffic is going back and forth. So I implore you to say, I was told I can't, that you guys can't say no, you have to present more conditions, but I ask that you say no. Ask them to consider the Hartford Insurance Company or someplace else, but that little tiny piece of property with the water, the water right next to it, just is not a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Janet Hawkins. I live at 3 Roswell. I've been living in Simsbury for over thirty-two years, seen a lot of goods, seen a lot of horrifying stuff, one of which was the ginormous complex that recently went in. I have, I have a challenge for you, planning and zoning. I have a challenge that you go back to what our goals were and standards for this town, say, back in the eighties. You're all familiar with Riverwalk Complex, correct? Is anyone here familiar with Riverwalk? Some, but not that many. The reason is, you can't see it from the road. It's a beautiful development, lot of housing, beautifully designed. I was in landscape architecture many years ago. You can't see it from the road. They've taken a narrow piece of land and did something beautiful with it, but what they also did was they put in something called vegetation. What happened to that when that huge complex went in? I thought, okay, well, that's pretty awful to look at, but surely they're going to put in a huge berm and mature evergreen plantings, and so we're not going to be able to see it. And that never happened. And that's when I thought the standards of zoning in this town have plummeted. And I just implo... I just implore you to look at Riverwalk, or not, because you can't see it from the road, and say, what do we want? What direction do you want to go in? I am a hundred percent for affordable housing, which I agree with the young woman who gave the great stats. Affordable? Come on. Really? So you need to think about where you want to go. I feel like we set a precedent with the huge complex, and now we're moving it right up the road, and that it's sitting next to somebody's home. I thank that gentleman who noted that, because when I saw the picture in the paper of the home that was going to be taken down for that, it was dumbfounding. Please think about the future of our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak?
Hi. My name is Reema Wada Parsons. I've been living in Simsbury for five and a half years at 27 Crestwood Road. This is my first town hall meeting, but honestly, the reason why we moved to this beautiful, picturesque town is because it's beautiful and picturesque. And over the last five years, I've been really disappointed by the planning committee, and I'll tell you one thing, you pass that through, you guys will not get voted ever back in because it's shameful what three things have happened. The one with the application right by Talca Mountain ruining the whole feel of the, nothing is wrong with progress, but progress with intelligence, progress with design integrity, and progress with an idea for the future. That development is terrible. The fact that we had this whole solar panel put up and nothing lights up our town or we see any benefits from that one in front of a beautiful area, and now you want to put something so small in a postage stamp when we sit there and Wagner is a piece of junk and you allow highway to destroy it completely? That's number one. Every day I pass by, I want affordable housing. Simsbury remains affordable. We want to express our, we want mixed housing. I believe in laws of equity, but equity that matters and equity that's long-term and equity that's environmental and equity, not for equity's sake, but actually saying to developers out of New Jersey, you want to come to our community, study it, feel it. Don't give us this narrative that tells us about equity when you don't drive that highway every day, when you don't know that the kids out of Simsbury High School are coming into the gym every single day, right? So rehabilitate some of the dead spaces that are commercial, but to tear down one building and build something that grotesque right in the middle and the heart of our community is shameful. To approve it is shameful. Bike paths, there's so much traffic, are we going to put a new light there? I don't mind growing the system. I want the downtown to sparkle and people to walk in it, and we have a sense of pride in our community. But you bring in a New Jersey team to tell us about equity? We'll build something together. We'll rehabilitate a space that needs it. Bring in a corporation that actually cares about our community, not slap something that we know in forty years is going to be decayed and empty, and they're just going to move on to the next victim. Don't be a victim. That's what I have to say.
Please, please, this is a hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I won't go back over a great number of things, but I do want to point out several factors that speak to public health and safety issues. You have received our experts' opinions, but you also have your own town experts who have provided you with additional review and affirmation that the information that our experts provided was deemed appropriate and accurate by your experts. So that it seems to me that the complaint that there has not been adequate review is unfair to your town staff. Our engineer, Seamus Moran, worked with your town engineering staff to develop the drainage and erosion and sedimentation control plan that's on the plans. It's been reviewed by your town engineers and affirmed as appropriate. The fifty thousand dollar bond number was established by your engineer, and we accepted it. We actually had a lower number. Mr. McGregor came back and said he felt that it was too low. We talked to the town engineer and suggested fifty thousand dollars, and we said that was acceptable. Every time this commission or the Wetlands Commission asked us to consider something, we did. And every time you raise an issue, we attempted to address it. You have before you a development that was reduced by twenty percent as an effort to demonstrate to the Wetlands Commission and to this commission's concern about parking that we could satisfy your concerns. The vote of the Inland Wetlands Agency demonstrates that at least five of the six members who voted felt that we had adequately addressed those concerns. There is no traffic issue that has been raised that presents itself to you. There is no flooding issue that this development causes. Does Second Brook back up because of the farming river? Absolutely, it does today. There's no evidence that this development will exacerbate that situation in any way. In fact, the evidence is the opposite, that we actually reduce the amount of water that flows off of this site onto the adjoining property to the north. That's what the Storm Water Management Report says. So those kinds of representations made by citizens are unfortunate because it is not based on any scientific or expert information. What is based on that are the reports that we provided to you, the reports that your town staff provided to you, all of which indicate that all of the requirements of this application and your site plan approval process have been satisfied. And unfortunately for the public, and probably not an easy thing to accept, and I thought it was interesting, the gentleman had, you know, took a straw vote in the room. Judge Berger, who is the land use judge for many, many years in the state of Connecticut, he heard all land use cases, and championed a lot of the decisions with respect to affordable housing, is quoted as saying, "Zoning is not to be based upon a plebiscite of the neighbors. Their wishes are to be considered, but the final ruling is to be governed by the basic consideration of the benefit or harm involved to the community at large." And I submit that you have no evidence of any harm, any danger of public safety or health that is represented by this application. Finally, in order for you to deny this application, you must identify a public health and safety issue. You must determine that there is no resolution to that issue, or that it can't be resolved in some way. Interestingly, when we were before the Inland Wetlands Agency last week, they had a hard time working through a motion, and it was based on a request of the developer that we consider a different drainage arrangement than the one that had been already approved by your town engineer. And we've already submitted a proposal for that through Mr. McGregor for the town engineer to review. If the town engineer feels it's suitable, it'll be part of the plan. If he doesn't, we'll stay with the one that he's already approved. But it's a demonstration of our effort to try to meet the expectations of this community. I understand I'm never going to have any friends in Hazel Court, and that's part of my job, I get that. But the fact of the matter is, you have before you an application under Connecticut general statutes, 830G, that meets all of the standards, and you really don't have an option if you can't identify a public health or safety issue that can't be overcome in some way. I thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. I think we've given everyone ample opportunity to say their piece and to sometimes repeat it, which is okay. And I think I'd like to hear a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Public hearing is closed, six-nothing vote. Thank you very much. Okay, let's schedule the hearing at our next, not a hearing, schedule it for our next, table it to our next meeting, which is the fifteenth of May. We do. As a result of the...
Mr. Chairman, you don't need an extension from the applicant.
Right, I understand that.
Okay. Yeah, under the, under the state code, once...
Thank you.
Once...
Thank you.
Once the Inland Wetland Commission makes a decision, state statute allows for thirty-five additional days for the zoning commission to make its decision, so there's no longer a need for an extension.
Okay, general commission business.
So we're not going to discuss it tonight?
So I don't, I would get a motion in a second to move this, move the application to your next regular meeting for discussion and deliberation.
You make a motion to table it?
I'll move it. We table this item for discussion.
I'll second it.
Second by Ann. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, it carries, we will table this and take it up with a fresh, a fresh head.
So for the topic, does that mean the vote will be at the next meeting?
It may be.
Or the one after that.
It won't be tonight.
They have five...
Okay.
Zero sixty-five page.
Okay.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five to my end.
It said sixty-five in the paperwork.
Why does it say in Simsbury that it is sixty-five? It's weird.
It says in the paperwork you have...
Mr. Chairman, staff doesn't have any additional business.
Okay. Who, Kevin? Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six, none. Thank you for your time tonight.